Drove down a road, some of the roads there are a little skewed. They have overruns almost right about the hands of. Have a certain sense of. It's usually in the middle of the night. Our school. We haven't been having lots of light, but still it's just fairly alright for the sound.
Well, sometimes you know, rain and night, rain helping down hard.
A little bit of this.
Yeah. So I have, here's not golfing at all. Went out over, Ray and I went out over the New Year, it was smar- smar.
That's why I don't like golf out there right now. It doesn't rain.
But they, were the greens good? Hey, we reached for my greens, we're gonna, the greens are good thing.
They had, they had.
Greens were good. Oh. Hayden went out.
And we're gonna go ahead and get started with our city council meeting, if you could, please join me in there. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, roll call, looks like we're all councils here in staff. Uh, any changes to agenda? Conditions? Didn't hear there were any. We have the consent agenda with the, went out for the read and potential approval. Council wants. Any, uh, motions on our consent agenda?
I wasn't here, so I, I couldn't.
Move we approve the consent agenda as opposed to.
Alright.
Second.
Second, you got a second, take a vote, on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, no motion passes, thank you. And we're on to our guest presentation, Lynn County Sheriff's Office, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Alright, this might be quick because I don't have a lot of talking points, it seemed like, uh, slightly slower than I.
Yeah, should, should look better.
Which is good. Uh, one thing I want to point out, uh, the arrests were almost as high as the traffic citation issues, which is, uh, as we talked before, uh, kind of the effect of deputy self-initiated activity. So seven folks were arrested on the marks, most of those were after traffic stops. Uh, other arrests included disorderly conduct, probation violation, and then some theft from Los Shop. One arrest for third degree theft and then two arrests for second degree theft. When we talk about degrees, it's really just dollar signs, zero to a hundred, hundreds of thousands over a thousand. If you're thirty, maybe second degree. Three crashes, two at Loves, and then one on Old Salem, uh, that young gentleman would issue the citations for reckless driving and speeding because of that crash. Um, and one thing when we talk about self-initiated activity, kind of the stuff, uh, no traffic stop is ever the same, never know what you're gonna get into, page eighteen or twenty-four. Uh, that was just a simple traffic stop for, uh, a violation, but both occupants ended up getting arrested. Uh, perfectly exposed or found possession of certain weapons by a felon. Uh, and also that driver had a, probably both drivers licenses in order. So you just never know what you're gonna get into, we, we turn a light on. Any questions? The, the crime seems substantially lower in front of November, which is good to see, um, especially during, uh, like the Christmas time, where a lot of people have family visiting, more cars in front of residences, valuable stuff inside. Uh, mail stuff, a lot of packages being delivered, I didn't see any calls regarding that in this month, which is fantastic. And I didn't see anything that concerns me for December.
No motions? I just saw your hours were up, so I thought it was gonna be. But, busier, but it sounds like the crime was down, so let's just patrol and just.
Yeah, and so.
What's up? And the rest, yeah.
Hours being that high can be contributed to the arrests. Because if we're doing self-initiate activity in Millerburg, all of those arrests have to be documented, where we record the course, it's sent to the appropriate courts, probation officer, and stuff like that. And the arresting wait longer than the call itself.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah, alright.
But Deputy Ross spends far much more time in Millerburg than I do, so if you have half, if you have any questions specific to the city or neighborhoods, uh, now we create a time to ask.
Do we end up tracking how much of this stuff is at Loves?
I don't think specifically, um, obviously if it's, if it's at that address, if it's documented at that address, but I don't think, I'm not sure if we have something specific for Loves.
Which is sixty-four hundred, right?
Uh, yeah, sixty-four, yeah. Six four five seven.
Some of these pages are every other one.
Yeah, and we're there a lot, I mean, between like business checks, anytime we're driving through, I try to.
I would, I would also just point out that I know one things are really good at doing is, is Deputy Ross just mentioned, anytime they're going by there, a lot of times they'll just pull in and just.
Love, what do you want to eat, do you want some apple?
They're documenting.
Keys, what do you want?
It doesn't always get documented, like sometime if I'm sitting there for a, for a while, I'm trying to recall, it doesn't always get documented, but I make it a point to drive through there, and I know a lot of other deputies too, too, important to always work to drive through there, to show our faces over there. We've got some numbers from state police in October.
Yep.
I think it was been like once a year, we kind of run like a specific address and see how much we're going there, maybe a couple hundred. This group are twenty, twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I think we're done this week, I'm, uh, in field training with a recruit, but what I'd like to do, like did last year's, kind of do like a comparison of other cities, and kind of show where Millerburg stands in regards to certain subjects, crashes, arrests, property crime, uh, stuff like that, so. I'm hoping to have more time next month where I can kind of get that prepared, this might look a little different next month when we talk a bit more.
Have you seen the difference in traffic patterns when the new speed signs went up out by Loves?
I did some enforcement there, kind of right as it started, and stopped quite a few cars, but since then, there hasn't been a ton of activity there as far as people really going faster there. Um, I think people noticed it pretty fast, and a lot of people were really appreciative of that being changed because of the congestion for floods and everything else, I know the truck drivers especially.
Yeah.
Were really appreciative, so.
And I think a lot of people already went pretty slow going through there.
Yeah.
A lot of people.
Absolutely.
And a lot of people didn't.
Yeah, if I was sitting there, some truck drivers made a point to stop and say how much they appreciated it, because cars do go ripping through there.
Yeah.
A big truck, like weigh a lot, and it's hard to go out and stop, so cars ripping through there pretty fast at fifty is, you know, turning for them, so that has dropped to thirty-five, they didn't appreciate it.
So it looks like you guys got another one for the, uh, passing in the center lane?
Yeah, so I stopped two cars for that today. Uh, I, I've noticed it more, I usually don't sit on the stretch of, uh, Old Salem much, and I don't, I was gonna ask you today, I don't know if those signs that have radar, do those track data, or is that just the?
No.
Okay, because I know we've gotten complaints on like Woods and that stretch of Old Salem, I patrol south Old Salem, the forty mile there was quite a bit. And, but I sat up here the last few days and noticed a lot of people passing that in the pass lanes, so I'll have to spend some time on that. And the two that I saw today, and their complaint was that people they passed were driving thirty-five. Doesn't.
Alright. Well, thank you, thanks Sergeant, Deputy. Stay safe, for the update, I'll look forward to next month's, uh, update as well. Okay. Alright, Albany Fire Chief Wooton.
Alright, good evening Mayor, council staff, I'm gonna keep the theme going of light on data, but I'll be a little heavy on stories. So, oh, you have your report here up on the screen, and also probably in your packets, call volume is down in Millersburg for the month of December? And you can see that actually you're averaging, if things continue the way they are, about two hundred and sixty responses over the, uh, over the fiscal year. That is true though for the entire department, we're a little slower right now than we have been in previous years. Uh, your response times though are remaining, uh, remaining the same, uh, seven minutes and twenty-eight seconds is the average, so, uh, that's good. Go to the next slide. Types of calls, again, not really a whole lot to report out here. A sick, a sick person leads the way, I've explained that, uh, to you all before, that's just someone with a generalized, uh, not feeling well complaint, fall injuries, fire alarm activation, slipped assist, as you can see. Right? So we had, I wanted to thank all of you for participating in our toy drive. We were able to turn over to DHS, uh, huge, we filled up the boat, a bunch of vans, and took a bunch of toys to DHS to hand out to kids who needed them, so thank you very much for having a box here at City Hall. Also new in the department, I've mentioned to you before about us starting a single role program, or I should say restarting a single role program, these are individuals that are just trained to be EMTs and paramedics. Uh, these are the five individuals that we hired, they went through a four-week academy and learning how we operate in Albany, and then at that point, they've been assigned to what we call a field training officer, where they have to show that they're capable and competent to be able to, uh, to be released into the wild on their own. So those folks right now are in the field training portion, a couple of them are being released as they meet the different benchmarks, and we're really excited, this is another way of looking at this as a peak activity car, that are busiest times in the day, we have this additional staffing, um, available to you.
It's hard not to notice that the gentleman on the right.
Yeah, Austin, yeah, okay, in fairness, um, the others are, are pretty short.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the others are short, I would, I'm taller than the other four, to give you perspective, we almost should have had a ruler, so I can just get some of those pictures where you, for reference, uh, but Austin is a, a big guy. So we got lots of things happening in the department as far as promotions, and, uh, you know, just to give you an idea of what's happening in, in your fire department, uh, one, the picture on the left, a gentleman named Hans Ruzlove, a great employee, got promoted to lieutenant, uh, he grew up in Junction City on a farm, uh, great, great quality, uh, employee. Uh, we promoted him to lieutenant. The gentleman in the middle is Ray Woolridge. If you remember the last time I was here, I talked about a grant we received from Samaritan Health to expand our community paramedic program, that created an EMS chief vacancy, which we promoted Ray Woolridge, he was a lieutenant in our department, has been with our department for some time, and if, it's the first time I've ever really done this, but promoting somebody in an EMS position that has the EMS symbol there on tattoo on his forearm, this guy is all in on EMS, so it was a perfect promotion. And then also on the right there, you see Chris Lebel, I'll bring Chris with me to the next meeting, uh, I've announced my retirement for June thirtieth of, of this year, and in preparation, you know, it's really important to our department that we have good succession planning, and we do have good succession planning, and it's all being implemented over the next six months. Chris will take my spot, uh, which, side note on Chris, there's very few people out there that can say when they first were hired that they wanted to be fire chief, and here jump forward, uh, twenty-three or so years later, uh, he is going to be our next fire chief. So amazing story, his, his father actually is retired from the Albany Fire Department, and Chris has hold, held multiple positions in the organization, and has been successful in all the positions that he's held. So, uh, with that will be a whole trickle, a bunch of other promotions which we're rolling out in the department right now, we're, I'm gonna brag about the department here now and again with this next slide, that, uh, what we've seen, few departments can say, everybody says they have succession planning, but frequently, when actually the opportunity comes and arises, people don't want it, they don't wanna step up. And we have, uh, Chris who, who wants to be chief and was a deputy chief, uh, we have people who are interested, one person particularly will be, uh, appointed our next deputy chief, we have battalion chief positions, which neighboring departments have had it gone outside to fill, uh, we have a whole bunch of people to choose from. So, you know, the work that our department has made investing in our own people is paying dividends right now, so really, really proud of our department. Uh, okay, so this next slide, this is not Millersburg, probably already know that by seeing Northwest Green Acres, this is in North Albany, but this is a story I'm just, will briefly tell you of what the people in your fire department, uh, will do, and, and the risk that they'll put themselves in to help somebody who needs help. This, uh, fire came in, in the early morning hours, and, uh, crew gets on scene and somebody's outside, uh, frantically saying that their husband is inside still. And fire, as you can see from the picture on the right, a fire is coming out of the windows, out of the front door, so our crews, that, one of the first things we do on a fire is, is a three-sixty, and it's just what you think it would be, somebody needs to get around the building to figure out, uh, what is happening in the entire structure, as well as potentially somebody could be dangling out of a window, and, and you don't know unless you get eyes on, on, on the whole situation. So as they made their way around, there was a neighbor there, who, a few neighbors and a police officer who were yelling that there was somebody in this bathroom window, and that's the picture on the left. And, uh, you know, I'll just kind of jump forward, the neighbor who I, I went and visited in, in the hospital, he was holding on to the victim and trying to get the victim out the window, and he said, it's just like you would imagine, I'm like trying to get him out, I can't, he was a large gentleman, and he just let, let go, uh, the victim dead, and just fell back into the smoke, and, and he just, I said, he just lost, couldn't see him any longer. So told her crews, uh, what was happening, there was smoke pouring out of that window, fire was getting ready to come out of that part of the building, and we had two firefighters that without hesitation, uh, dove into the window. And, um, side note, they landed on him. But that's okay, right? Uh, given the, the totality of what was happening. And so, you know, fires aren't like you would think on TV, or like they're sometimes portrayed, just a regular house fire, uh, you usually can see about this far in front of you, and it's really kind of unnerving, you know, we get used to it, we train a lot for it, that you go a lot by sense, by touch, uh, but, because you don't have vision, you don't have that sense. And so, uh, unfortunately the person didn't have a lot of clothing, like I mentioned, was large, to be able to get out the bathroom window, so, I mean, I'm just so proud of our people, uh, I mean, without like any delay, they radioed out basically and said, make a door for us, and, and that's what somebody did, they grabbed the chainsaw, and they turned what once was a window into a door, pulled somebody out, passed them off to the ambulance, and then started resuscitative efforts and resuscitated the person. So just an amazing rescue that the crew did, and, uh, I'm proud of our training chief, uh, whom you may know, I'm proud of the crews, the fact that one of our missions is we'll risk a lot to save a lot, and, um, and everybody like stepped up to the plate when they needed to step up to the plate, because this is not something that they do very often, right? Honestly, that's probably a once in a career time when, when you're put in a position to do what they did, and so it's something they've been training for, for a long time, and they made it happen, so, amazing job. Again, didn't happen in Millersburg, but those are the same people that, uh, that are serving you, and serving your constituents, and that's the effort that they'll, they'll take to help you. So, that's all I have. Please.
I have one question, um, so I know your times stay relatively steady.
Yeah.
But I'm curious, because that seems high to me, and so I'm curious, is it, and is there a way to bring that down, and I understand that there's some of the issues are probably just the way calls get routed, and that takes time, so I don't know if that time starts from the time the phone calls made, or the time that it hits your guys.
Sure, let me do a couple, or let me address a couple things. One, uh, none of these, I don't weed out calls, so these are, this could be a non-emergency response to, uh, Simpson Park. So, you know, which is probably one of the longer areas, response areas in, in your, in your, in your city. Um, also, uh, with that, it's comparable to the city of Albany, and our response there, and you mentioned this as a question, but you're right, and that is, that is the total response time, that is from the time that dispatcher picks up the phone, to the time that we are showing up, somebody clicks that they're on scene. So that includes a time for you to call, includes a time for the dispatcher to take the information, which can be anywhere from sixty to ninety seconds, then they route the call to us. Uh, turnout time is what we call it, uh, so that's all inclusive.
Okay. If I could add as well, um, uh, just being part of the conversations in the past with the fire service and looking at, uh, call time, um, if you call nine-one-one from the city of Millersburg, um, you will likely get connected actually up at Center North, uh, MedCom, they will take the, they have to, by law, but that PSAP will have to take the, the dispatch center, will have to take the information down, then they will transfer down to Lynn County Dispatch, and that's something we can't change, um, and that has been as, I mean, we've timed it, and it, it's a minute and a half, two minutes sometimes to get that transferred. I haven't done it in quite a while, um, paid attention, because I was paying very close attention to that during the conversations in the past, um, so I don't know if that's improved, uh, where that connection, my hope would be quicker, but that has been a delay, so that's an additional delay to getting, and that's unfortunately something that we just can't get away from.
We have the same situation in North Albany, Benton County.
But I don't think that was, at the time that we were looking, when I was doing the work for you, the, it was the opposite, the calls that were generated in the city of Millersburg, we're going to Lynn County, Lynn County then was happened to, because they were complaining that it was dry, taking the times. So for an example though, at the time before we switched surfaces, I think Jefferson's average response time to a call in the city was about fifteen to twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was done.
From the time, from the time of call until arrival.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I wasn't trying to say you guys were slow, I was just, I was trying to do the math, I'm like, it doesn't seem like Millersburg's very big, so.
Station right here, right?
Right. So, so what was happening was medicals were going into Albany, Albany was taking the call, so when we had, Jefferson's still providing it, so the call was coming into Albany's PSAP, Albany was then, then having to transfer that call to MedCom, is that right?
Yeah, MedCom, yeah.
MedCom for Jefferson, so that was one of the reasons why we pushed so hard after we exchanged also to get the ASA changed, because we were seeing long response times because of that delay in getting the, the answers. Now, if you're outside this, you know, because everything that's in Lynn County goes to Lynn County nine-one-one, so, but if you cross the river, so it, I don't think it's, most of the time unless, you know, most of the cells I think are still catching, Lynn County.
Thank you. Yeah, I know there was a delay, and I know it, when we looked at times specifically with Jefferson, it was double, it was at least double, so definitely a huge improvement.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing, it's definitely a, a great opportunity to join teamwork with Albany Fire on Rescue. Any questions for the chief?
I'd like to thank your constituents behind me for talking golf for twenty minutes.
Alright. Thanks Chief, appreciate it. Alright, we're gonna go into a public hearing, we got some stuff to read here, um, to go into, uh, for the public hearing, uh, tonight we're, uh, holding a public hearing regarding an update to the development code, um, some procedures we're gonna follow, uh, Gina, you're gonna read disclosure, staff will, uh, make a presentation, that's then an opportunity for, uh, public to comment, uh, in favor, uh, or against, uh, and then we'll, uh, uh, break, basically close the, the public hearing, and then, uh, have a conversation and vote, uh, possibly vote on that approval, uh, looks like we're, um, well, at that point, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. So I'm gonna officially open the hearing, and Gina, please, uh, read the disclosure if you could.
All persons testifying will be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address. The city development code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision, those criteria and findings of fact are in the city's staff report.
Alright, then we'll move over to Matt, you got staff report for us?
Alright, thank you Mayor.
Good amount in our, in our packet, so it's good information there.
It's a lot of very small changes, but when you add them all up, it's, it's a bit of a packet for sure, indeed.
Yeah.
And so let's go into that, um, before we begin chair, and one thing I did want to clarify with you, uh, I wasn't sure, we've got a, I was gonna go over each one of the changes, and I wasn't sure if you wanted me to go through a change and then stop for any discussions or questions, and then go to the next one and stop again, or if you wanted me to just plow right through and then circle back to any questions? Either way, it's fine with me.
I think, uh, we've had the information, uh, I'd say just let's go through it, and if council has any questions at the time, or they can, or clarification, they can speak up.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Well, throughout the year, we continually track the code, where it's working, where it's not, where changes need to happen, and, um, most of those, like I said before, are very small changes, and we keep a running list of all those throughout the year, and then when we hit a critical mass, we, uh, then push through one of these code updates, that's a lot of very small, uh, updates, it usually ends up being once a year, usually around Christmas, but not always, and so, um, that's what we're here today to do. The changes we're talking about today are broken basically into two categories, we have some that are state mandated, uh, and that's part of the climate-friendly and equitable communities, uh, requirements from the state, that's that, uh, abbreviation there, I've talked to you folks a lot about that, uh, the climate-friendly and equitable communities is some changes the state is requiring us to make, uh, in order to reduce greenhouse gases from the state's point of view, and, uh, a lot of the requirements kick in when we hit five thousand population, we're not there yet, but there are some other changes that affect every city in an urbanized area, in a metropolitan area, and we're one of those, there are some changes we have to do, and we're gonna talk about those tonight. The rest of the changes we're gonna talk about are the small incremental changes that we've added and kind of collected throughout the year, and we're moving through now. So first, we'll go through the climate-friendly and equitable communities updates that the state wants us to do, so what's important to communicate here is that all these changes are required by the state, and we did not embellish on any of them, with one exception, and we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes, but, uh, the climate-friendly and equitable communities basically requires all the cities to do these three things, we have to remove parking mandates, we have to, uh, add some parking regulations that we didn't have before, and we have to add capacity for vehicle chargers to be added someday in new parking lots, they don't have to add the chargers, they just have to run the conduit while they're still digging up the parking lot, because that's the most expensive part, so the state's requiring us to add that requirement. So let's break down those first two and talk about those a little bit more. So in order to go through the changes, just to organize them for what we're presenting here today at the city council, we gave you a table, and in that table, we assigned each one of the changes a number, again, just for organizational purposes, and up here at the top, you can see this first slide is addressing quite a few of those changes, because most of them were for the climate-friendly and equitable communities. And so the first thing we were doing is, uh, removing parking mandates, well, what does that mean? That's a big term, um, really, our code requires a certain number of parking spaces for a certain kind of use, so a grocery store has a space for every one thousand square feet, a warehouse has, uh, you know, two spaces for every ten thousand square feet, bowling alley has one space for each lane, stuff like that, well, those are required spaces, and the state is wanting us to remove them altogether. Now, the state is, uh, harboring the thought that, uh, people drive cars because there's places to park them, and if there wasn't some place to park the cars, they are going to magically stop driving cars, and so that's kind of where this comes from, and they think the less people drive, the more the greenhouse gases go down, that's where this is coming from. I'm not saying Millersburg staff subscribes to that theory, I'm just trying to give you a flavor for where that comes from. So, um, most of the changes that we're doing are, here on the screen you can see, is table fourteen, table fourteen in our code, a. Table fourteen in our code addressed how many parking spaces were required for different uses. We're ditching the whole table. Now, that doesn't mean that people aren't allowed to build parking. It doesn't mean that we are disallowing parking in any way. Matter of fact, it's quite the opposite, applicants can now choose how many spaces they think their use needs. And so in theory, could somebody build a restaurant and put zero parking spaces? Yes, they could, but they would pay a price with that, because naturally their customer base would be pretty thin. So here in Millersburg, where you have to drive to things. So if a, if a department store comes into town, they're going to put enough spaces to service their department store. So we're not really worried about the impact this is going to have in our community, because we feel like a, a lot of those are kind of self-correcting problems. People are going to put the right amount of parking spaces that they need. And so we're not too concerned with those changes. Now, when people do indeed build parking, they do still have to comply with our standards. And what I mean by that is how wide the parking space is, how deep the parking space is, the fact that they have to parking stop, the landscaping in a parking lot. All those standards they still have to comply with when they choose to actually use parking in their development. So the next three changes pertain to parking lot standards and what the state wants us to do with those standards. And so the first one is the state is now requiring that fifty percent of all parking lots have shade trees. And we had something similar to that in our older code, this is far more specific, but this isn't new to Millersburg. Next, the state is mandating that we add carpool and vanpool preferred spaces to most businesses, including industrial businesses, that are new. Not the existing ones, ATI's are going to have to go in and retrofit their facilities to add these spaces, it's just new ones from this point forward. The last one is a little bit odd, but the state is requiring us to allow redevelopment of existing parking lots, but specifically to add new bus stops and bike parking. And I actually tried to leave bus stops off and the state called me on it and said, no, Matt, the state law says bus stops. I said, we don't have any buses. They said, it needs to be in there anyway. Fine, we added it to the code. So our code now talks about bus stops, even though we don't have any, but that's fine. And that's been added. The next one, the next thing I wanted to talk about here is, as you probably all recall, anytime we change our code, we have to send the draft version off to the state, the DLCD, their version of a planning organization. They have to look at it and make sure it complies with all the state's requirements. And we did that, and they sent, sent us an informal email, they specifically called it an informal email, where they first off praised us. They said, this is great, you're doing exactly what we wanted, this is wonderful, your community is going to reap benefits from it, and lots of things like that. But they did have some suggested edits, and we made most of those edits in the version that you got in your staff reports. So it already reflects the DLCD's required corrections. But there was one place where they requested a change that was not required by state law. And we decided not to move forward with that. And we gave them an explanation of that, an explanation that I'm going, that you have in front of you in the memo, and we'll talk about that memo a little bit later on, too. But the state wanted us to waive one of the provisions that we added. What we added in there was the state wants people to be able to get rid of parking lots wholesale and not have to come to us for any kind of permission for that. And we didn't do that. We said, you're allowed to get rid of a parking lot and put something else there, but you have to come to us and get approval for that change. And when you do, you have to do a little study that analyzes the impacts to the community surrounding that. Because we don't want this displaced parking to now cause a lot of street parking in neighborhoods, on residential streets, or on neighboring businesses. And so we required that study to show that, and we even have the right to deny a change like that if we feel it is going to have negative impacts on the surrounding community. State asked us to strike that, we felt that it was too important to protect our existing communities and kind of uphold the understandings that people had when they purchased their homes, their businesses, their expectations of where parking would be. So we left that in there. Now, just to clarify, just to clarify, all of our edits still fully comply with the state laws and, and the rules and regulations. And the state acknowledged that, but we left that one in there. So the next one, changes gears a little bit, away from the state mandated changes. Now we're talking about all the smaller changes that we identified ourselves that need to happen to our code. And the, we're going to start with the definitions section. And the first one was, we had to clean up a couple of definitions. The first one was daycare. And we realized that we had kind of a hole in our code. We had a problem, because somebody contacted us and asked if they could set up a daycare in a vacant house with no occupants. And according to our code, they could. And we were a little bit uncomfortable with that, because residential is supposed to be residential first and then home occupying, you know, businesses second. And so we're adding this definition just to clarify that you're allowed to have daycare, that's fine. But someone's got to live in the house. Doesn't even have to be owner occupied, but somebody has to live in that house in order for you to have daycare, because then you truly have a home-based business, which is fine. The second change we made is one that we kind of missed before, actually, in our previous changes for accessory dwelling units. And we didn't specify that duplexes were allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit. And so all we're doing here is changing the definition to make it clear that a duplex can also build an ADU if they so desire. And again, that one's state mandated. Number twenty-one, we left this in the table, but we pulled it from the update. This is something that, that we were going to add to make a small change to non-conforming uses, but we changed our minds, decided it wasn't the right time. But we left this table intact, because all of our numbering for the rest of our updates was already in place. It would have been too confusing to pull it all together, so we're skipping this one. Number twenty-two deals with land divisions. And our code, we have sections for subdivisions, and they were really designed and established with residential divisions in mind. So much so, that they kind of ignored industrial and commercial subdivisions, which happen all the time. And so what we've done here is we've gone in and retooled it a little bit to clarify which rules apply to industrial and commercial subdivisions, and which ones apply to residential subdivisions. And then a third category, of course, rules that apply to all of them, and there's plenty of those, too. And so we've made those changes to this section. We've also added a newer section. You can see here, I've outlined in blue where one building might want to buy the land it's sitting on. We didn't really have a way before to make that happen. And so we've now added a provision that would let that kind of thing happen. It's not so commercial with, or not so popular with commercial developments like this, but you can see it in shopping centers a lot more often, where Carl's Jr. will want to own the dirt under the Carl's Jr., Safeway will want to own their dirt. But the parking lot is communally owned by whoever owns that shopping center, and they all share the parking. We didn't have a tool to do that before, now we do. And that was part of the updates that we made. So it seems every time we change the code, we're changing something with accessory dwelling units. We didn't want to leave it out this time, so we added some changes in here as well. We are proposing some clarifications and some new ideas, so let's start with the new idea first. We are proposing to increase the maximum size of accessory dwelling units. Now, when we first adopted the accessory dwelling unit rules or the ADU rules, we were forced to do so by the state. And we were a little bit concerned about the possible impacts. And so the city collectively decided to make those units as small as possible. And so we have a six hundred and fifty square foot maximum size on accessory dwelling units, one of the smallest in the area. And some time has passed now, and we've seen that not a lot of people have really requested ADUs. But we have received quite a few complaints at the front counter, that six hundred and fifty square feet is too small and it's really curtailing a lot of the people wanting to build those. And so we also did a new housing element in our comprehensive plan, you might remember that fairly recently. And in that new housing element, we said we were going to revisit the size of an accessory dwelling unit. Here we are, we're revisiting, and that's what we're doing right now. So to start, how do we compare to other cities around us? And you can see, we've got a table here. You can see that most of the cities hover around the nine hundred square foot maximum. Lebanon goes all the way up to a thousand, somewhere as low as eight hundred. You can see our, our big brother next door is nine hundred square foot maximum, based on some sliding scales, of course. And so what we're proposing is this, we're not really proposing to change the minimum size for everybody. We're going to leave that the way it is, but you can see this, and I'll just read it out loud. This says that the new change we're proposing is kind of a sliding scale. And it says, an additional one hundred square feet of floor space may be granted for every one thousand square feet of lot size over one thousand square feet. However, in no case shall an accessory dwelling unit exceed nine hundred square feet. Now, that might seem complicated, and it is a little bit, but that actually comes from our accessory structure section. Our accessory structure section has had that same language all along. And so we're just kind of borrowing from that and applying it to his little brother, accessory dwelling units. So we figured that was a good fit. And Janelle and I crunched some math earlier today, just in case you were wondering what this really looks like. And if you have a residential lot over thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, that's the max, that's nine hundred square feet. So any lot bigger than that can automatically have a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. Now, that was the new thing that we're proposing, but let's talk about the clarification to ADUs as well. We wanted to clarify the relationship between detached garages and accessory dwelling units. And we've had some confusion about that, so this is hopefully going to fix all that. And so we had some new text that said that a detached garage is just an accessory structure, period. And a, a accessory dwelling unit is an ADU, and so the ADU rules apply to that. So the individual rules would apply to each of the individual structures. And if an ADU is attached to a garage, then you simply apply the accessory structure rules to the garage and the ADU rules to the ADU. Pretty straightforward. So we brought this to the planning commission, and they agreed with this in concept, but they thought that the paragraph we put together was a little bit confusing. And so we rewrote that paragraph in the version that's in front of you here before it got printed in the packets. So you, you're seeing a revised updated version. But Janelle and I thought it might still be a little bit confusing. And so we sat down with the chair of the planning commission today and retooled it yet again. So the text you're seeing here on the slide is newer than the packet you have in front of you. And so what I'll do is I'll just go ahead and read through it, because it's, it's new and I want to make sure it gets captured in the record. And what it says here is, it's clarifying for garages that a garage may be constructed with an ADU, but it's not required. So you don't have to have a garage for an ADU, we weren't trying to say you did. The garage can be attached or detached to the ADU. The garage does not count towards the square footage of the ADU, because remember, nine hundred square foot max, we're not going to take the square footage of the garage and count it against that. And the standards for that come from chapter three fifteen, we're pointing the reader to that. And the square footage of the garage would then count towards the total square footage allowed for accessory structures on a single lot. And again, that's echoed in chapter three fifteen. And then there's a second thought here, and that's why we gave it a separate letter, and just reminding people of something, this isn't new code in B. This is just reiterating a part of the code that already exists. What this says is, no garage required for the primary structure is permitted to be converted into habitable space for an ADU or otherwise. Now, that's a little bit difficult to write, because somebody could take the garage in their house. Now, remember, this section here, section three twelve twenty specifically says all single-family homes, even manufactured homes, have to have a two-car garage, period. And so that's why you can't fill it in now with an ADU, not allowed, have to have a garage. Now, if you want to put an ADU in that garage and then build a shop that was a two-car garage on your property and call that your two-car garage, fine, no problem. So this leaves the flexibility for that to work both ways. Let me move on from that one, and we can circle back if there's any questions. Oh, all right, we'll take a look at it. Okay, so the next change is a pretty easy change that we're proposing, and we're simply changing the word chicken to fowl. Our code did have a chicken section, and we really meant for that to be a fowl section, and that actually does encompass other birds. And so that's a pretty easy change. We're also, we were silent before on exotic pets, so it was legal to own a tiger in Millersburg before. Well, it's not going to be anymore, because we're adding a provision that says you're not allowed to keep exotic animals in Millersburg. We have enough livestock around where that could be a problem, and so we didn't want that to happen. We did specifically say that pigs are expressly prohibited in all forms, even your teacup pigs for pets, can't do it. Too much of a hot button issue. Moving on to number twenty-five, that has to do with street names, and our code didn't have a lot of information on how street names are supposed to work. Developers select street names in Millersburg, common in all cities here in Oregon. But we've added a provision that says that the city manager can clarify, or can, we've clarified that the city manager can veto bad names if they don't make any sense. Now, this is a sample, it's not from Millersburg, but this might be one where Kevin would say, no, something else. Middle Street and Middle Road is a little bit too confusing. Now, we've proposed a small change to our commercial design guidelines, and we're proposing to strike a requirement. Right now, we have a requirement that says you have to have architectural features on every wall surrounding the entire building. Well, we realized, when we processed one of our permits recently, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because some walls cannot be seen by the public at all. It's facing a fence, it's facing a neighbor who's got a building right there next to the setback. So why would you put stone wainscoting or a window on that side when no one's ever going to see it? So we've changed that requirement to soften that up a little bit. If they can be seen from a public street, you still have to have architectural features. But if it can't be seen from a public street, you don't have to. Now, when the code was totally redone about four years ago, we added a section for a historic zoning overlay. And we primarily did that so that we complied with the state's goal number five, which has to do with historic preservation in planning in the state of Oregon. And I'll be honest, when we added it, we didn't think we were really going to use it. So I'm not sure we threw it under the microscope that we should have, because we had a permit come along fairly recently and needed to use it. And we realized when we processed that permit, this section needed an awful lot of attention. It didn't work very well at all. And so in this update, we've completely overhauled the historic zoning overlay section. And here's what we've done, we've changed the historic committee to a historic commission. And the reason why is simple, it's because they're making land use decisions. And so we felt somebody who's making a land use decision needed to be a commission, not a committee. We've assigned notice requirements, it was completely silent on what kind of notices were needed, where and when and how, so we've added that. We've removed some special timing requirements that were specific to historical changes. We wanted to make those similar to other land use cases, so we've now made them consistent with each other. It didn't have any path for an appeal, and so we've added that now, it was silent on appeals before. And we've assigned case types to the different major historical categories. Specifically, a brand-new historic designation will still come to the city council as a type four. Planning commission first for recommendation, and then final action by the city council. To demolish or move a historical structure will be a type three, so we'll go to the planning commission and stop there. If you want to change the exterior of a historic structure or add something new to the historic structure, that also just goes to the planning commission and then stops there. Both of those will be type threes. Now, our code spoke to street trees, but it was a little fuzzy on when and where they were required. And so we've added some clarification here, just to make it very plain, yes, they are absolutely categorically required, half of those street trees. And then we've also helped the reader understand the spacing distances and things like that, the requirements for them. We've pointed the reader to where those are, which are in our, our engineering standards, thank you, to know where they were. The next one was for manufactured homes. We actually didn't have any requirements for skirting to go around the bottom of the structure. It was kind of implied, because it does say that a manufactured home has to look like a single-family home. Well, skirting helps you get there, but it didn't flat out say that. So we've just added a very simple requirement that you have to put skirting on a manufactured home. The next one is RV covers. And we've had a lot of complaints about this section, an awful lot of complaints about this section. And so we took it to the planning commission and kind of worked some possible ideas with our planning commission on how we can possibly fix this. And we do have the changes here that reflect the direction of our planning commission. And what we've done is we've added a new section of standards for RV covers alone. Before, we just considered an RV cover an accessory structure. But the accessory structure standards didn't really translate very well to an RV cover, and it got kind of confusing. So we got a whole new section just on RV covers now, because they're very popular here in Millersburg, as you can imagine. And to start, our two hundred square foot rule still applies. Hey, Matt, what's a two hundred square foot rule? That simply says that if you are building something under two hundred square feet, you don't need a building permit, you can just build it, you're good. If it's over two hundred square feet, you need a building permit, all these standards that apply. The biggest change we're making is now we're flat out saying a metal RV cover is okay. Now, the planning commission, or the city council in the past specifically asked us to change that, because there was a lot of metal covers going up. And there was some concern that they were a little bit ugly and could be bringing the city down aesthetically speaking. And so we changed away from that and said that they had to match the house in material and color. And so that really meant that they had to use wood covers, which are a lot more expensive. And we heard this from a lot of people at the front counter. So now we're saying they're allowed. But we did clarify the setbacks for RV covers, and this is specific to just RV covers. But what we said was, the setbacks start at the roof line, not at the wall or the uprights. And the reason for that is, we didn't want the roof line to be so big that it was now dropping drainage down onto your neighbor's yard, as opposed to going in your own yard. So the setbacks start at the, at the RV cover there. We did add some requirements for, oh, let me go back to this one. We also said that there's no setback at all between the cover and the house. So you can put it as close to your house as you want to, bolt it to the house if you want, it's fine, we're okay with that. We did touch on colors a little bit, and we said that the colors had to be earth tones, or they had to match the main color of the house or a trim color of the house. So there's some uniformity there between them. Out last, we did also specifically discuss the height limits for RV covers. And we said that there's a twenty-foot height limit, or if you can be more than twenty feet from the property line, say you own four acres, if you can be more than twenty feet from the property line, you can go as high as the property line, you can go as high as the zone will let you, which in most cases is 35 feet for the rural zone and for the residential low zone. And that was the changes we're proposing to RV covers. Now, flag lots were creating a little bit of confusion as well. And we had some folks who were trying to figure out where the front setback was, and in some cases, that's a little difficult. And so what we've done is we've added a requirement that says that, well, not a requirement, an allowance, that says the community development director can choose which side's the front, which side's the back, and which side's the sides. Now, you might be saying, hey Matt, that's crazy. In this example, the big one, it's very crystal clear where the front setback would be for that flag lot, it would be on that southern edge, right? Yeah, and in that case, it's pretty easy to determine, I agree. But look at the other illustration here. If the lot is designed in a strange way, all of a sudden it becomes kind of challenging to figure out where the front is and where the back is. And so now, we leave that up to the community development director to decide on a case-by-case basis, which way makes the most sense. And that will usually be done in conjunction with the applicant. Okay, we had some figures in our code that we put in there four years ago when we redid it. Some of those figures have been either misleading or flat out erroneous. And so we've been wanting to do this change for a long time, this has been a long time coming. And so what we've done here is we've arranged these next few slides so that you can see the current figure on the left and our proposed revisions on the right. So let's start with this one. This is figures one and 59, it shows up twice in our code. And this is from the accessory structure section. And the setbacks in this case were just wrong. It said that they were five and 10 feet, five for a single story, 10 for a two-story. That's not true, it was five for a single story, eight feet for a two-story. And so we revised that. We've also corrected this breezeway that was there. They were showing the two structures connected to the breezeway, but this was supposed to be showing you what an accessory structure looked like. However, if there's a breezeway connecting them, it's not an accessory structure anymore, it's an extension of the house. And so this figure is flat out wrong. So what we did was we just removed that breezeway and showed that it has to be detached in order to be an accessory structure. After all, the figure was called accessory structure placement, so that clarifies that. For figure 28, this comes from our definitions section. And we had a definition for a zero lot line. And we do use zero lot lines primarily for duplexes. So you could actually put two structures on two different lots with a line going right down the middle, and we allow that. But our definitions section showed row houses in there, which we wouldn't even allow. So we've just revised that exhibit to get rid of the row houses, so it's a little bit more clear and a little less misleading. This exhibit or this figure is from our ADU section, and that's 31610. And again, the setbacks were just incorrect, and so we've just removed the setbacks altogether, the actual number for the setbacks from the new drawing. And it had the same issue before where it had the breezeway connecting it, but it was called detached accessory dwelling. That's the name of the figure, and yet they were attached with a breezeway, so we got rid of the breezeway. The next one is figure 63, and this is from our subdivision section, and it's called flag lot access. And in this case, you would generally not have a flag lot with two structures on it, especially structures of identical sizes. You might have a primary dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit or an accessory structure, but they wouldn't be of the same size, so this exhibit was just really misleading to people. And so we've just revised it to show just one structure on the back and not two. And just for all the attorneys in the room, I will note that we did reach out to the artist who drew all these to make sure that he was okay with us changing his artwork, and he was fine with it. He said we actually did a great job changing it without coming back to him.
I was actually going to ask you about that.
He's still around and I talked to him. He said, I sent them to him first and said, are you okay with this? And he said, you did an amazing job, did you do it by hand? I said, no, 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 it's all digital. He was fine with it. Then he said, if you need more work, come my way. The next one is for single-room occupancies, and this one's a little bit confusing. But the state has made a mandated change that says that cities aren't allowed to outlaw single-room occupancies. Okay, so what's a single-room occupancy? Let's talk about that. A single-room occupancy is somebody who owns a house and rents out every single room to somebody. And there's communally shared bathrooms, communally shared kitchens, but they've rented bedrooms to different people. Now, the state's very specific, they say it becomes a single-room occupancy when you rent four bedrooms or more. So if you're renting three bedrooms to people, you're not a single-room occupancy. And the only reason this is important is because some cities were outlawing them and the state feels this is an important piece of the puzzle for our housing crisis, it's the most affordable form of housing, so they want to be sure cities had to allow it. Now, to come full circle, Millersburg never outlawed it. There was nothing in our code that said you couldn't do this. If somebody did this, we wouldn't have any issues with it. So what we've done here is just hyper-clarify this for the state. And so we've added a definition for single-room occupancy, stole it right from the state and plugged it right into our definitions section. And then in each one of our residential sections, we've added this as a permitted use in the use tables. Now, we could scratch this all together, we'd still be required to do it as far as the state's concerned, it just wouldn't be in our code. So adding this just kind of helps us clarify to the state that we've done what they've asked us to do. The next change, number 34, deals with our clear-vision areas. And the text in our code seemed to imply that clear-vision areas on street corners, which are areas where cars can see through, so you don't put anything large there to prevent a car from seeing around it if you're pulling out. The code seemed to imply the clear-vision areas were only required for residential areas, it was specific to residential, it even said that word right in the code, that's not what we meant. The clear-vision areas are clearly as important, if not more important, in industrial areas than they are in residential areas. And so we fixed that. We also added a change to it that allows the city engineer to grant some flexibility so that these don't seem like a one-size-fits-all situation. There's a lot of distinct circumstances that are case by case, site by site, where the city engineer may need to require more of a site distance or less of a site distance depending on the circumstances. So the code now adds that flexibility for the city engineer to do that if that need ever arises. Okay, this is the last one, this is number 35, the dead last one, and it's probably the least important of all of them. And we're simply correcting an error in the table. Here, we had a spot that said the trail on Old Salem had to be on the east side, it's supposed to be on the west side. So this simply fixes that so that it's on the correct side of the street. So this brings us to the criteria, and I'm not going to go over the criteria in extraordinary detail here tonight, the staff report went through it in excruciating detail, and you all had a chance to read that. The proposed edits that we made do meet all of the city's requirements and criteria from our development code. They also meet all of the requirements of the Oregon administrative rules and the Oregon revised statutes, as well as they're being fully consistent with the state's goals, and that's all outlined in the staff report as well. So with that, I have a recommendation on the screen, but before I get there, I wanted to pass this out. This is a memo that you have sitting in front of you, and shame on me, I gave the same exact memo to the planning commission, I should have just put it in the packet and then I wouldn't have had to mention it. But I neglected to put it in the packet, so now I have to talk about it again. And what this basically is, is we got a couple different email from some of our citizens about this, they wanted it passed on to the decision-makers. And the first one is asking for a change in the maximum size of an ADU. He wants us to allow a much larger one, up to a total of 1,800 square feet. I understand, he wants a larger one, staff thinks this probably isn't a good fit for Millersburg. You saw the maximum size for cities around us, nobody came near 1,800 square feet. And so we appreciate the comment, but think it's probably not the right fit for the city, that's just our recommendation. The email that we got from the DLCD wasn't in your packet, so now it's in the memo. That way, it's officially introduced into the record. Our response is in there too, if you wanted some entertaining reading on what we told them about their suggestions. Last one was another request we got for something totally new in the code. And at this point, we said, we got back to this gentleman and said it's a little bit late in the game to be proposing something all brand-new, we like your suggestion, think it's a good fit, we're going to add it to our list now to put in the next code update. He was fine with that, he didn't think this was on fire or something we needed to address right away. So that's our memo, and with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval, and I have a suggested motion on the screen, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me make a clarification on the manufactured home standards, and I apologize, we didn't catch this at the planning commission. And Matt wrote a staff report, I think, well before we did, but it has been fixed in the text. So the skirting, actually, once we looked at the code, again, we didn't need to do anything about skirting because we already require the base of the manufactured home shall be enclosed continuously at the perimeter with either concrete, concrete block, brickstone or combination thereof, and no more than 12 inches can be exposed. So we already require actually excavated renovations for manufactured homes in residential on single-family plots. So just for the record, actually, the change wasn't about skirting anymore, it started there, and that's why it was still written that way in the staff report. But really, the only change to the code is saying that one manufactured home and one accessory dwelling unit are allowed per lot. And then also, the roof pitch was changed from four, four to one to three to one, three, sorry, four and 12 to three and 12, for the pitch to be more consistent with other standards. So we just wanted to get that in the record and make sure that everybody understood what the actual change ended up being after some iterations of review.
Thanks for that, looks like we're double-cover, potentially triple. Anything else, Matt?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks for the information.
Sorry about the length, it's a lot of changes.
A lot of changes, yeah, a lot of changes. This is an opportunity for public testimony. So if you choose to come and speak in your testimony, please state your address for the record, you'll be given three minutes to present to us, and we'll start with a testimony in favor of the application. Do we have anyone online?
We have a number of people online, anybody online, if you want to speak, go ahead and unmute and just say something, and then I can put you on the house system if you want to have the city council hear your three-minute testimony. Not seeing anybody.
Not seeing anyone in the crowd here, so same testimony for anyone that's opposed to the application.
You can just let us know.
And nothing out in the committee, all right? And then anyone else who wishes to speak, just either way, just to speak at this point regarding this application? So, any questions from council, staff, for clarification, anything there?
So I'm good with, I think, almost all the changes. I'm not happy with the mandate of the street trees, I despise them. I despise how our sidewalks are set up, and I think mandating trees that one, nobody trims back to keep cars from hitting them or to let people walking on sidewalks get under them, I'm not a fan of the street trees. I don't think that should be in there as mandatory.
Do you have any clarification, we'll have further dialogue on that after we close out, okay? Just look for clarification for staff, sorry. All right, no, it's all right, definitely. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, we'll have some conversation, and what we heard was, you're not happy with the trees, that's the 50%, the 50%.
Mandatory.
The what?
Change it to street trees are mandatory?
Street trees. Not street trees, parking lot trees, not street trees.
It's said street trees.
Well, we have two different changes, one is for the state mandates from climate-friendly equitable communities, and that says all parking lots have to be covered 50% by trees. But then a totally separate change is where we were clarifying the street trees were, it was a bit vague, and so we've come out and said those are required and then pointed the readers the standards, but that part's not state-mandated, that's just us making the change.
That's what I'm not for, I'm not for making that change to make a mandatory.
Can I respond to that? So the change in our code right now, actually, the language just added, it previously said street trees are required to be planted prior to final occupancy of a structure, or when required of the developer for areas that are, so basically where, the change just says pursuant to city engineering standards, they're required. So the change really is just pointing them to where do you find the information on how they're placed. The question of whether they're required or not, I don't think is changing in this.
So it's not mandating in the planting strip, that's what I, that's what I'm against.
It is, but it already was.
I'm not against in the yards or anything.
It is, but it already was, we're not changing that right now. So that's just a clarification I wanted to add, that this change, this code update doesn't change that because they already were, I think it's a, it's still a point and a discussion that I just wanted to make.
Yeah, the engineering standards do call for a landscape strip and the sidewalk outside the landscape strip and trees in the landscape strip, but that's coming from the street sections.
The engineering standards give the information on setbacks from utilities and size of, well...
And distance between trees, right?
No, no, it's just setbacks from utilities, really, but that's what comes out in the lot. And tree type. So the appropriate species of trees are planted in appropriate widths of planter strips. But the requirement for trees would be in our development code.
Well, the design of the street section comes from the TSP.
The trees have been identified in the development code since prior to the major redevelopment, rewrote, right, we did. One of the things that changed with the last one and what Janelle's pointing out here while we're addressing the engineering standards, because we never had a standard on what type of trees were to go in. So some of the challenges, some of the things you're mentioning, some of our older neighborhoods, the appropriate trees for that area was not put in. So the engineering standards now talk about specific trees based on the width and the style and things, so they have to be within that to try to avoid some of that in the
However, if a resident removes one of those older trees, are they required to replace it?
There are, we do have a tree permit now that we've had for several years that would require, if someone wants to remove a street tree, then they need to get permission from us. They don't necessarily have to replace it depending on what space is available. If the only places they could put it conflict with utilities or site lands or the things, then no, but under most circumstances, we would.
We do have a standard in our code that says all single-family homes need to have a street tree in the landscape planter and then a second one in their yard somewhere, or they can have the second one in the landscape strip as well. But we don't have that for commercial or industrial developments. But every single-family home has to have a tree, right, where...
So if a tree damage, so if the tree roots end up damaging a sidewalk, who's responsible to repair it? But yet, you're mandating a tree be there, so you're mandating a damage. That's, I'm not a fan of that strip, and I think I've made myself clear on that, I think that planning strip is backwards. We mandate that strip there in residential areas versus quote "safety," but yet in our high-speed areas, we put the sidewalk right next to the street, it's backwards.
I don't disagree necessarily, but is that part of this development code specifically?
No, I would say, not specifically to some, but I would say our design standards going forward for those higher-speed roads do have the sidewalk separated. What we have is a lot of existing situations exactly, like you described, the higher-speed roads, the sidewalk is tight against the curb, that's not what we would design going forward, but that's an existing condition.
And moving forward, the state is also starting to lean pretty heavily on requiring trees over all sidewalks everywhere all the time because they think that's part of the reason why people aren't walking is because it's too hot on sidewalks. And so they're starting to talk about requiring trees everywhere and every sidewalk all the time, period. They haven't taken that step yet.
Like I said, I want to be clear, I'm not against trees.
All right, any other comments on this? I do hear what you're saying, and I think it is sort of something that, you know, I don't know, down the road or how we can address it more, so it is sort of, can be definitely a problem, seeing the sidewalk push up and it's back on the homeowner. It's not the first time it's come.
Well, and I said, there's trees right next to our mailbox that you pull up to, you're always worried about scraping your vehicle on them, so it's, I don't like them because they blow in my driveway in my garage.
Yeah, or the fruit that dropped, if it's a fruit tree, which I'm sure is going to, that's not part of the, I'm sure, updated, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, the purpose of adopting a list of trees, recommended tree species for those planter strips is because we have a lot of situations, you're right, where roots are impacting sidewalks, curbs and things, because it's not the right tree for the width of the planter strip. And, you know, most of those trees now that are having those impacts are 20 years old. So we, I think some of the things we have put into place will help with that if we keep having trees, but that's a whole discussion that we have in the future.
Any other comments? Well, yeah, we had the opportunity for public comments. Sure, there, and, okay, all right. I hate to cut people off, but...
I mean, if you wanted to have a motion to reopen the hearing, you could.
Is it, you sure? Okay, so we do have a motion in front of us. Anyone willing to put forth the motion to accept the ordinance? This was recommended by our planning commission.
I moved that the city council adopt approved DC 23-02 and adopt ordinance number 210-24.
Second.
All right, we've got a second. Take a vote. All in favor, signify by aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thanks for all the information. All right. Now. Yeah. Moving on to public hearings. So this is an opportunity for community members to come forth and ask questions to council as well as anyone online. If, if you want, this is an opportunity for a public comment. All right. Not, not see anyone out here and no one online? All right. Counselor staff comments before we move on to manager's report? None? Oh, that's right. I do have something to stand by here. Thank you, Kevin. So we have, it's, it's first of the year, so we get to go back and see where we are. Well, it's up on the screen. Thank you, Matt. On our committees and our involvement in different areas representing our city. So that's our current list up there. And I was going through it and I'll just go, you know, events planning committee. We good with that? Mark staying on there? Okay. Joint water, it's three of us there. Yep. Dave, you good? Okay. Council of governments, it's you and me, Mike. And I've been trying to make a few of those meetings. The ones I have, I really got a lot out of, but I'll continue and maybe I'll let you know if I miss. You can fill in. Okay. And then cog consortium and we'll stay good with that. We can get with that, Janelle, Kevin. And then we have the AMPO part there and I understood from conversations in the past that maybe that's something, Mike, you're and are you willing to swap out? Is that an interest of yours? I think that was a conversation council.
For which one?
What do I be? You want to explain a little bit more about it?
Oh, this is what we talked about. Yeah, I'm good. Yeah.
Are we good with swap? Yeah, there's something we, I think it was a few months ago or probably more like six months ago. So we'll make the swap for there. So John, you're off the hook. Or you can get an alternate or I guess, you know, go ahead. Oh, and then the last one is Cascade West Area Commission. You need a nomination?
And so both AMPO and C WAC are transportation commissions and they kind of go hand in hand. So it certainly is fine if two counselors want to split those duties, but it's usually with the other jurisdictions. It's usually the same person.
Right. Okay. So that might would also, but it needs a.
That one needs an actual nomination. So they sent out a form asking us to fill it out and say what meeting, you know, the meeting date, public meeting when they were nominated. So it's, there's actually three positions and it wasn't on your hard copy because I re-looked at the form and there's an alternate as well. So we have the primary, full commission, primary representative, the full commission, alternate representative, and then the technical assistance committee rev. So the full commission primary has to be an elected official. The other two don't.
Okay.
The, the full and primary and the alternate could be the counselors.
Okay.
It can also be, I can be the alternate and the tech person if that's what council wants.
John, did you have some of that or? Okay. Is, is it the recommendations that both the AMPO and the C WAC is together or would be best? All right. Get yourself into Mike.
Sounds like that's what they're saying.
I'm assuming.
A lot of votes for a vote.
Oh.
A lot of votes for a vote.
He's in. I'll nominate Mike Hickam for, to be the point representative for council for the C WAC. Second that. You got a second? We'll take a vote for primary. From Mike. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Motion passes. So you're going to be primary nominate John as a second backup alternate. Get a second on that?
Second.
Second, take a vote. I'm all in favor. Signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay, you didn't get a chance to get out of that one. All pose same sign. Motion passes. All right.
You have to do the tech.
The what?
You have to be the tech person as well.
Oh.
I can continue doing.
We have to nominate that? Is it tech? Tech? Okay, so.
Nominate John, Janelle Booth.
Thank you. Second. Okay, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, cool. House duties done there. Then moving on to city manager's report.
All right, the first one is going to vote for Parkland.
Okay, not much of an update on this one, except it was before the commission, planning commission last week and the planning commission approved our concept plan on January the second. And so now we take that preferred alternative and we move forward to try and turn that concept plan into construction documents and we're going to be looking for a grant for that as well. And we're investigating those grant funding opportunities as we speak. That's the extent of my update on Miller'sburg North Park.
Right. So I think it was the last council meeting, we discussed the seismic valve replacement at the water treatment plant and it was taking place the week of council meeting. Well, it actually didn't end up taking place that week because as part of that project, the reservoir at the plant will be down and Albany and Miller'sburg will both be fed from the Vine Street Plant, which we discussed. When Albany went to produce water at the Vine Street Plant, get that up and running at the quantities we needed, it wasn't, it wasn't producing the quality of water that was needed. And our understanding from them is that it was due to the very high sediment levels in the river. So or in the river that we're getting into the canal and into the plant. So they had to put the project on hold. They did not replace the valve at that time. It has been rescheduled for January twenty-fourth. I just got that confirmation today. So the week of January twenty-fourth, we'll be going through the same process that we did in December as far as switching us over to being fed from the south and all that, but that is currently the plan. And I think Kevin's going to talk a little bit more about the drawdown, reservoir drawdowns and the sediment issues.
So one of the main reasons, one of the main reasons that Vine Street, Vine Street's an older plant, so it's not the membrane technology that our new plant is. So it doesn't deal as well with the higher turbidity. So that's where they were having, that they weren't able to meet the levels that was going to be needed with, with AM plant being offline. So there has been a coalition that it kind of started, it was being spearheaded somewhat by Representative Kate, who represents the Southernland County area, state representative Kate. But they had sent a couple of things out. They'd sent a couple of letters. And right as all of this was coming out, they sent, over Christmas, they sent another one. They were looking at sending an additional letter. In your, in the packet is a letter that Governor Kotek wrote to the engineer, district engineer for water programs management, asking him to reconsider the Army Corps of Engineers, the drawdown and what is taking place. So we were asked if we would support via signer additional because they're realizing there's additional communities that are coming on. So they asked if we would be willing to be a signer to the new letter that was going to the governor's office. We took a look at it, had a discussion with mayor and we went ahead and put, they put our logo and the mayor's name on it. But primarily what they wanted to point out to the governor, this is one of the hazards of unintended consequences. Because the reason we have this strong drawdown at Green Peter was because even though the governor is now asking the Corps of Engineers to reevaluate this, one of the strong supporters of this was Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife who had a lot of sway at the time with the judge who ordered the drawdown. So they want to make sure and point out, even though it wasn't during Governor Kotek's time as governor, that the reason we're in this state now is because the strong support that ODFW, a state agency, had in pushing for, for this. So they want to make sure that they did that. So you'll see that's what's addressed in that, that letter to the governor's office, just pointing that out that ODF took action to hold them accountable, filing a lawsuit against Winchester Water and some other things that prompted resulted in this being forced upon the Corps. The Corps was not in favor of this. They brought up a lot of concerns with it, which we're, we're seeing now. So I think it just highlights, you know, some of the unintended consequences. We don't, you know, we don't completely think things out that can happen. The impacts they're estimating, you will see in that, that letter, just some initial estimates to address those things if this were to continue for the agencies, Albany, just Albany, Lebanon, Sweet Home, and Lowell, who is being impacted by another portion of the Lamont. It's about thirty-five, about thirty-seven million dollars to have the facilities to be able to, to deal with that. So. So that's, just wanted to let you know that, that we were, we were on it. Any questions on that?
I just make comment. Thanks for jumping on that. And, you know, getting us as part of that as we're impacted as well with our water intake and hopefully.
And then you'll notice on there, you don't, I didn't see Albany's, but Albany is specifically identified in the, in the letter. The other thing I just wanted to give you an update, Kinder Morgan Tank Farm, progress slowed just a little bit. If you see in that photo there, you'll see seven tanks that look like the tops are open on them. Those are actually what we call a floating roof tank. So when they were actively being used, because of the vapor concerns in them, so for more flammable volatile fuels that roofs floated up and down on them. So those tanks have been out of service now for probably thirty years. What they realized is when they went in and here a couple of months ago, take a look to, started to evaluate them, they found some water, some rainwater. So the seals around those edges were allowing some rainwater to come in. So they had to do some testing. They've completed the testing. They're waiting for results of that to do it, but they got the water stored on site. So that put, put them a little behind on their process. They expect to be, have the contractor mobilizing this week to begin demolition and expect to be done by the end of the. So I just want to give you an update on that.
Fingers crossed.
Drove down there today to see if I could see anything, but.
I thought I seen some trucks in there, but they're not there now.
The trucks had come in when they were pumping out. So they brought out some of the treatment, the containers for treatment and stuff on site. So as soon as they get that testing back, they're checking to make sure the water didn't have the metals and compresses or there's, you know, brule and mercury and stuff like that. So they can determine how they have to dispose of the water, make sure they dispose of that. So, so that is where we are at on that.
Perfect. Great. It'd be a great change to our drive-through here this area and see those removed. So thank you for that work.
So the next thing is, Janelle's got an update on transportation.
Sure, sure. You bet. Happy to.
But before we get to that, were you going to do a transportation?
Probably also a good time to note that Kevin had the tops of the flagpoles redone and with all new pulleys recently. Looks like our timing was pretty good on getting that up there because they were starting to leak quite a bit.
It's banging pretty good.
Yeah, you can hear them, but they're not going to come up. All right. Transportation system plan. Part of the climate friendly and equitable communities the state has done has triggered a lot of changes that need to happen in everybody's transportation system plans and how they're structured. And so the state has put everybody on a schedule for when those need to happen. We were kind of far down the schedule, but we realized there might be some economies of scale for us to do it at the same time as Albany. That way hopefully we could put those two together, do a lot of the studies at the same time. So we moved us up to tag on with Albany, which means now it's going to be a little sooner than we had originally anticipated. And so we've got a meeting here shortly with the state where we're going to talk about grant funding opportunities. Hopefully we won't have to pay anything for that except staff time to update our transportation system plan. But the good news is we were due for a transportation system plan update anyway, and now it's going to be on the state's dime. So that's good news. It is going to have to be C F E C compliant by the time it's done. And that's really just going to mean in a super, super nutshell, from fifty thousand feet, it's just going to mean a lot stronger emphasis on pedestrian uses and bike uses in our community and not just an emphasis on cars. And that's the update we have for our TSP moving forward here shortly.
And then I've got a quick update on transition Parkway. So we had a cultural resources study done as part of our wetland permitting process. And that was complete. They found one possible resource that needs a little more investigation in one of our staging areas. So it doesn't affect our transition Parkway project. All we have to do is just stay away from it, which is easy to do. But it is part of the parcel on the western edge of our property, western end of our property and part of the property that we're marketing. So there is a recommendation to maybe do that additional investigation now so that it's ready to go. The consultant gave me a quote for it. It's around eight thousand dollars. We don't actually need council approval or anything to go forward. It's within city manager's authority, but we didn't want to bring it up because we could just wait and let someone deal with it down the road, but it, it is something that will have to be dealt with before somebody can develop on that property because now it's in a record that it exists.
And we had to change the design a little bit. So now it looks like this.
Oh, boy.
But the record shows joking.
We unfortunately let a planner get involved.
I didn't give them much time to change up the image. I forgot. That, and I should have clarified, what they found was a, I think it was an octagon concrete foundation. It was no one knows exactly what it was, but likely from a silo. There, there used to be a homestead on that property. It doesn't match with the aerial photo, historic aerial photos of any of the features associated with that actually, but this, the guess is that it was some sort of silo foundation. So it is not likely something that needs to be preserved, but there's a process that has to take place.
And our, our feeling is we're better off doing it now for any thousands. If we have to come back, we gotta go through the whole process again. It's going to cost us more, more than that. Just get it, just get it taken care of.
Makes sense for sure.
And then just to briefly touch on the overall schedule, we're planning to have bid documents stamped by the end of February. Is, we pushed that back a little bit from what our original plan was to go to bid in January. Just because we're kind of waiting on other things associated with the industrial property. And so then we'd be looking at bidding sometime in March, possibly March to April-ish going out to bid. Just wanted to keep you updated on that.
Two other quick items that aren't on here that just, that have come up since we sent this out. One, we are now live on dot gov. So our website now is www.millerburgoregon.gov. The people who are using our old one, they will still do it. City staff has moved over to the new email addresses. So firstname dot lastname at millerburgoregon.gov. We'll be looking at moving the counselors over to that, but Laura thought she wanted to make sure she can check to make sure we get things done up. Your laptops and things.
It affects one drive login.
One drive login.
Because it is your login email address. Our old email addresses will still work just fine now. So if people are emailing the old addresses, they'll forward to us and there will be no, no one will see a difference.
And they also won't see a difference if they try to use our old website address. They're still logging in. The other thing I just wanted to let you know, we were contacted by AROCO. They are looking at a major modernization of their facility. They have asked their, the president, vice president of the US operations are going to be out probably towards the end of this month and they've asked to, to meet with us to just talk with us. So just wanted to let you know, it sounds like some significant modernization and investment on that facility. And we do have a new person in the front office. So if you, you come in, Joanne Johnson. This is, is this her first week or second week?
It's her second week.
Second week, second. She turned back last week. So, so if you come in, you'll see her. She's at the front desk, the furthest closest desk to the counter there.
And lives in.
As a Miller'sburg resident. Even better. All right, that's it for my report.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to your report.
Okay. In your packet, you've got something that for most of you will look familiar. It's just essentially a one-page outline of standards that we need to follow for public meetings. Summarize them real quick. So number one, other than city council meetings, open ones that have been, you know, properly noticed, don't discuss council business when, with other city counselors, when there's a quorum or more folks are together. So quorum being a majority, city counselors, three for us. I would suggest, you know, candidly, that other than public meetings, you know, that would be the exception rather than the rule. Just don't discuss city business with other city council members outside of public meetings unless you're, you know, you're kind of consulted. Just don't discuss, uh, city business with other city council members outside of public meetings unless you're, you know, you kind of consulted with me. There are cases out there where, uh, local jurisdictions have been challenged with something called serial meetings, where someone says, hey, I'm gonna go talk to you, and then you talk to Bob, and then you talk to Susan. Um, and we just want to avoid any kind of accusations of malfeasance or not following the rules. So, uh, the simplest thing is just go ahead, reserve the days to talk, uh, council business, um, in in scheduled meetings. And then if you have any questions, you know, contact myself. If you do, are are communicating, make sure, you know, we we don't want to have written communications. If you discuss council, uh, business with other council members via text, email, that becomes a public document which relates to the next, uh, section. So any kind of public record has to be retained for five years. So your notes, uh, and communications, those all need to be retained. So if you're texting another council member about council business, uh, that can, you know, make sure that you have to figure out a way for to port over those conversations to the city reporter, so we can print out a record of those. Again, if you just don't do that, then you don't have to, uh, talk with myself or Sheena about the way to go ahead and memorialize those, uh, those, those public records. So that's, that's the simplest way, uh, is to just reserve it for, uh, public work sessions. And, you know, we're always open to scheduling those either as special meetings or, uh, and or or before council members, if 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 we do have the things that we want to discuss, uh, outside of that. But with our relatively light agendas, there's usually enough time to discuss council, uh, matters at the public meeting. So unless there's questions, that's my report.
We've changed this a little bit in discussions with with Alan. In past, we recall, we did this every January, or should ask you to sign this and things. So, uh, the intent now is that it just be captured in the minutes that this was reviewed with each of you and, uh, you're aware of it. So, yeah. So you don't have to, uh, do the.
Thanks, Alan.
You're welcome. So the discussion between council members is more than three, three or more?
Quorum is three. And just to be clear, it's regarding city business. So, you know, any personal matters, that doesn't matter.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for the clarification and review. Okay, we're moving on to unfinished business. Um, what we've had for the last couple of council meetings, uh, Republican Services rate increase requests. And Julie, we got you out in the audience who want to come forward. Thank you. I think your last council meeting, you weren't feeling the best, so.
We have to play at my house over Christmas.
Yeah, sort of knocked out a lot of people, so.
Good. Okay. So, one, I do just want to thank you very much for moving this forward to the January meeting. I appreciate that. Two, I want to introduce Brett Davis, who's here with me tonight. Brett is the general manager for our division, our, our business unit of Republic Services and also resident of Millersburg. So I thought it would be appropriate for him to be here tonight. Um, we're really just here for two reasons. One is that we wanted to resolve the one percent rate issue, and I think you have that on the agenda. And then the second would be just to sort of give you a little bit of an update since our conversation in November about what we've been doing and how we've been looking at the, um, challenge of sorts that you guys presented us with in November. So how would you like to start?
Well, let's, let's hear what you got, you know, of course, yeah, to go and share that with us.
Good. Well, I, I think you have all the information about the rate increase and that, and so I won't go into that. But I did want to just give you an update of what we've been doing and what we've been talking about since, um, the November meeting. The first one being that, um, we, I think we talked about extending the franchise termination deadline from December thirty-first. And so we went back and had our legal team draft an amendment. Um, we sent that in. And I think Kevin and Alan both agreed and approved of that document. We've extended that deadline to, I think it's June thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So we added six months to that timeline. And I think, um, you know, hopefully we can be resolved long before that. But we wanted to make sure there was plenty of time for that. The second thing that we did was we almost immediately put together a meeting with Brett and myself and our operations team to look at, um, the conversation that I had here at council as an opportunity. A little bit of that way as an opportunity to see how are we, maybe we're stagnant in Millersburg. How are we operating in Millersburg? What are the issues? And how can we resolve those issues so that everybody's really happy with what's going on with Republic Services and the city of Millersburg? So I won't go into a lot of detail because we have a work schedule, our work session scheduled on the twenty-third, I believe, Kevin.
Yeah, we, we haven't tentatively held aside. We'll see what, uh.
If not that date, I, I think fairly soon we have that scheduled, then we can dive into some of these things. One of the things, I was given some advice, uh, not to dive into customer service, but I'm just gonna give you a little bit of information on that one. And that is just to tell, I think I told you that we now have thirty people on staff for that local Oregon pod with customer service. And just to give you, um, a little bit of flavor of that, in twenty twenty-two, we had, um, just over sixty-one thousand calls to customer service to that pod. In twenty twenty-three, we had about forty-nine thousand calls. Fewer calls is good. Fewer people are having issues. So that's, that's to that whole pod. The service level of handling it with one call resolution in twenty twenty-two was about thirty-seven percent. That service level resolution, uh, in twenty twenty-three was seventy-eight point seven percent. So we're seeing a lot of improvement there, but we're still diving into that. We got some preliminary numbers. And then, um, we'll start to look at the end of the year numbers and get that last bit of December for twenty twenty-three. So some of the things we're looking for there. Um, the other thing that we did was we went back and we looked at what complaints and compliments came in from the Millersburg franchise in twenty twenty-three. So that was up in, up through November. And, um, what we discovered, so let me tell you how that happens. When somebody calls and they say, I'd like to make a complaint or I'd like to register a compliment, those are registered in that way. And there were twenty-one calls from Millersburg. Of the twenty-one, um, six were compliments. And there was one complaint that had been duplicated three times. We don't know why, but it was exactly the same complaint. So there were really thirteen complaints and six compliments. And what was really interesting, and this was one of those things where I say it's an opportunity. We started to look at what the most common complaint was, and it had to be yard debris carts being missed. And so we could dive into that and say, okay, so we know some things about yard debris in Millersburg. Most of the places we work, we have weekly yard debris, but here it's every other week. And to further complicate matters, we pick up about half of the city one week and about half of the city the other week because we have to balance that route. So there's a lot of, not to say we have a missing yard debris carts. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying like, we looked into some of those calls and a number of them were just that the customer had them out on the wrong weekend and was confused, which I will tell you before I have weekly yard debris, I did all the time. My neighbors were always looking at my cart and I was trying to make sure I got it right because they relied on me. But checking the calendar is sometimes difficult. So we looked at that and said, okay, that's one of the issues that we can see here. And so how can we solve that issue? There are a couple of ideas of things that we can do. So that's just to give you a taste of some of the things we're looking into. We also would love it if, um, prior to or during the work session, we could get a list from you to say this, these are some things we'd like you to look into. These are some things we want to hear from you as well. And then I know there are some updates to the actual franchise document that there's some desire to change. And so, um, we'll, we'll either wait to hear from you what you think those are or what you'd like to make changes to. Or, um, if you'd like, prior to that discussion, we can, um, we can get a list from you and look into that as well.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for the updating that, that information, um, on the complaints and just sort of where we, we've gone with, uh, the, the different percent and fixing the problem with the first phone call. It's good. Um, part of this conversation is to find out, you know, what, what is, what are our recommendations? As you mentioned, you'd like to know before a work session, if we are going to move forward with that. So I'd like to hear from council, like, what, what are the things that, that we, we've had plenty of time to think about. It's been on our agenda for a number of months. What are things that are you hearing or seeing or, um, that we need to address? Or at least speak to if we do have a work session and just open that up. I've had personally, uh, I thought I was having a problem, but I think it was more for me for pickup. So, uh, I resolved that by just bringing my cart out a day earlier. It, it was just timing. But anyways, uh, so that was more on me. So I thought I was having some problems, but I, I think it was more, um, you guys just started picking up earlier than I was, uh, in the past. So some things changed. That's on me because you're, you know, it says that. Um, I did.
One of the things that I've been, uh, this, just this week that I've been saying to the fellow who works for me and he does, um, a lot of the communications that, you know, we need to say exactly what we're doing. We need to say things in a less vague way and really tell people exactly what we're doing. So I think it's an opportunity for us to examine how we've said it over the years. And of course, this time of year with Christmas and New Year's, you know, we pick up on those days, but.
Yeah, that was another one.
And we've always done it. We've never done it differently, but I would say there's a large part of the population that still isn't aware of that. So the next day they call in.
Yeah, that was me again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I went on and Googled, uh, and, uh, Republic Services, uh, are you pickup schedule? I don't know what I actually Googled exactly.
They sent me a text message and call me.
Yeah, me too.
I did not get that.
I'm, I am upset I didn't get that. It would have helped me because what came back to me is like they don't, they pick up the following day. You guys pick up the following day. And so I took it out and my neighbor, as I was hauling it out, she said, she told me, it's like, um, they already came. And I'm like, what? It's, I looked it up. Well, I just Googled it and there's a lot of Republic Services out there. I wasn't really, I should have said, you know, Albany, Oregon and all that. But, uh, then I went on to your website and your website, and I checked that and was very clear, which I, I was impressed that, um, did, uh, pick up on holidays. So that would, those have been my experiences, but you did mention the, um, yard debris carts. And I get that. And I know that's been a conversation at council in the past. And so that, that'd be something if we want to have a conversation now about, if we, you know, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is do we need a work session, uh, and how, what does, what does that look like? And, uh, for that to occur, we need to know what are we, what are, what are some of our talking points? So you can come forward with, with information, data, whatever it is. So.
I think we do need a resolution as far as, um, yard carts, uh, leaf debris. The trees are mandated. We get pickup every other week. We don't have street queen, uh, sweeping for the leaves, pickup in that regard. So I think that's a, a comment that I've addressed with residents, um, damaged or broken carts and being assessed a charge for that when it's not the resident's responsibility. Those are minor.
We shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening. So we'd like to know who to talk to, who needs to get that fixed.
She's been told to reach out to your customer service line. I don't know that she did.
I, I think I can leave some cards behind.
Perfect.
My phone number and my email.
Yep. I think there's a lot of options there. You know, we have a huge, uh, leaf program with the city of Carvallos. You know, we call it Carvallos, like tree, city USA, right? And, um, so we have all kinds of, of things that we work with them. Same with the city of Dallas, like in Dallas, for example. We only go up to Dallas, we have a leaf program in Dallas where we, where we drive around two weekends a, uh, a month. Uh, during the fall, we pick up leaves that are along the curb. But they also allow residents to dump, uh, leaves, yard debris at like a couple of city locations, uh, up until January first. And then we go after that and we clean them all up. But it's a city designated area as well. So, so, so they use that for kind of, uh, people that have more leaves and what they can put in their leaf, uh, containers.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
So, but, you know, like the city of Carvallos asks us to drive, uh, the bike paths, uh, specific lanes every day during like a ten-week period to make sure that the bicyclists are safe from the landscapers that are blowing the leaves out into the street and all those kinds of things. We don't have quite that of an, of an extensive, extensive program in Albany. We do drive around and pick up leaves, but it's not near as extensive as it is.
There's a big difference.
Carvallos. It's just been around a lot longer and more developed. But, but there's a lot of options that we can do and that we're willing to work with. Um, so, so, so for sure, you're open here. We just want to make you guys happy.
We've also come back to our financial team to say, what would it cost to do weekly yard debris in the city of Millersburg? And I think, you know, we're pretty motivated to make that work for you just because, um, you know, misses, you don't know this, but misses count against our drivers. Our drivers don't really like that when they get misses. So they work really hard not to do that. Um, it's, it's a hard thing to, to put all of Millersburg into one week because then we've got a driver who's working overtime one week and not the next week. And so routing is tough. So we have some motivation to do that. And I would say we have some financial motivation to do it, to give, to do it at a really pre-mob rate. So we're working on a lot of ideas for you guys as to, you know, what some options could be. I think, um, stormwater wise, it's better to put leaves in a cart than into the street. And we're starting to hear that from a lot of cities as stormwater happens, bigger deals too. So, you know, whatever the city wants to do, we'll make that work.
You know, I'd like to see this process a little smoother and a little less painful, um, personally. You know, I, just an idea to throw out there is to do a, a two-year escalator, um, and identify the escalation. You know, not the garbage index, but find an escalator that we can find and, and where it's tangible. And, uh, and then on the third year, do an adjustment, come in for a, a shore up. So I don't know whether that sounds good to you guys, but it's, I, I mean, I sit in your guys' spot at other locations and, and, uh, you know, I know what it's like.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, um, familiar with every single index that we use. Obviously, you know, Julie knows all of the different franchises that we have and everybody agrees to the most part two, like an index. That way it's not us coming in and asking for something that's unreasonable, but we all got an agree that it's a industry standard.
Fair. Can I just add some context? So right now, under our franchise agreement, just I got questions from council and stuff of like, well, what are we doing? And like, what can we say? Like, what, I mean, I don't even really stand the question. Like, they're coming in and they're asking. The, the franchise agreement talks about rate changes may be approved. They have to be approved by council. You may ask for them. And there's, there's, it's really a reasonableness test, but there's ten very, you know, kind of some broad factors that have to be addressed. But, you know, your, your ask wasn't necessarily narrowly tailored to this, this franchise agreement. And it was a little bit unmoored from, from the terms of that. So Counselor Sullivan's comment about more or less modernizing or restructuring the franchise agreement is a policy level decision. But when we are trying to make a decision under the terms of the existing one, having that kind of frame within the, the scope or the call of the question, uh, might be a little bit more helpful for council in the short term, if, if that's.
And I think that's one of the challenges that we have because this franchise agreement is, I think, fifteen.
It looks like it's handwritten.
Yeah. It's old. So let's just, let's just say it's, it's really old. And I think it was in place when Albany eleven sanitation was still here, which has been a long time ago. But there was an agreement and, and I don't think it was ever captured in the franchise, but we did find documentation. And I don't even know where, where it was. But we did go back to find where I think it was Albany, Millersburg, tangent, maybe eleven, where they agreed to the, the numbers that they're, they're being used now because of that very purpose. Cause I think.
That was two thousand thirteen.
Okay. So two thousand thirteen, we found that document, but it was never, because we've got a, a rolling franchise that's never, that was never been codified. So every time that we have something, then counselors ask that question, you know, trying to remember, you know, where that document is, where it's living now today because that's never been updated. So I think, as, you know, as John has said, as Alan said, you know, it's really, I think that's one of the things we need to do is bring that thing up to, to date. So whatever we're gonna be using, it's, it's clear. So we, and then we can look, you know what to be looking for. And I think that's where one of the challenges is now because every time it come up is there's questions of where are these numbers coming from and why? Rightfully so, because China's not yet there.
So I think I would add too, um, I would be open to your idea with just creating like a two-year with an escalator um, on that second year. And, and I'd even go as far as provide a way to come back for, for that off year. Like we had a couple of years ago where diesel prices, you know, I mean, obviously if you guys are put into a hardship, just be. You know, I mean, obviously if you guys are put into a hardship just because of the economy, then yes, we need to wait it to make you all whole so you can keep operating for that year. But I think I would also ask, just like we did last year, if you could bring this to us earlier. Because that's where I feel like I get it and I'm trying to absorb the information, but I'm being told I have to make a decision right now. And it doesn't give me time to absorb what, what you're putting in front of me and really think about what you're asking for and what's there. So I think that's the key point. If we could get it earlier, it'd be easier to work through too.
And I think it would be helpful for us to, to put that timeline into the franchise as well. This is the month, aside from, you know, things that we can't foresee, this is the month.
And I mean, even if it was November instead of December 1st, it would, at least it gives me that month to look at it.
Well, information was.
We, we did send the information out early. The meeting wasn't scheduled. So I think we got the, the information at the end of September, we said it. But because of schedules, we weren't able to get it scheduled until November. So you did have the information. So Julie did have it to us. There was a conflict with her schedule and our schedule. We tried to get it on October just because we know. But the history's been here, so.
Okay. Well, thank you then. That's all. I mean, it's good, good information. And so it's just a, a, is, we have a date. What is it? 2023?
We have a, we tentatively. The question was, you know, if you want to have a full council, if you want to just point a couple of people to work with staff or we just have, you know, we can do it as a work session. How, what's your preference?
Yeah. I, John, you want to?
I need to be healthy if everybody had him.
Yeah.
Because everybody's making the decision, right? So everybody has a vote. So I think that's healthy. So what we had talked with Julie about is doing a work session when our normal council work session would be, and that would be the 23rd at four.
I will be in Bend for. Does not keep so.
Yeah, true. 23rd. I think we. You good?
I'm good.
You can remote in.
Yeah, you can remote in. It would be at four.
Okay.
And, and I would say I'm good. And to answer your earlier question on if, if we think we need a work session, I don't know that I have anything to really bring up, but what would be nice is if you had numbers generated for what it would look like if we did go to a weekly yard debris pickup. Just so you can kind of look to see what that would be.
That's what I was thinking. If, if we did have a work session or something like, hey, this is how you check this box and this is what you're going to pay and, you know, and sort of, I know we can't totally custom it, customize it, but it sounds like there's a lot of, well, you mentioned an opportunity out there. And maybe that's the time for us to do that as well as then some of the restructure to, you know, language and getting it updated. We can provide staff and Ellen some, you know, some, you know, direction on that as well to help navigate that.
Could I suggest maybe, and Kevin, you tell me if this doesn't work, but if we could come back to the council at the work session with information about weekly yard debris and about, you know, dates and some of those kinds of things that maybe the whole council would like to provide input on? And then maybe work with Kevin and Alan or maybe a councillor included as well on some of the contract language updating to bring back to council. That might, that's what we're.
I think that's.
I don't know meetings, but you know.
So one of the, one of the questions Julie and I just had is when you had proposed, I think a couple of years ago about going to weekly, I think at that time, they were starting to, they started accepting food waste.
Yes.
So one of the things that might be interesting is, is to take a look at that. And what's the average size of garbage can here right now? Because I, I think if people took advantage of the food waste going into there, do they need to have the same size garbage cans that they have?
This is exactly, it's a document I put together for the city of Dallas just last week. And, and they're looking at the exact same issues. And yes, about, this is a sad number, but 20 to 30% of what's in your garbage can can be food waste. That's what the state estimates. It's a lot.
I, I believe it. I lived in Germany for five years and your garbage can is the size of your kitchen can. And that's picked up once a week, but your recycling's what's huge. Your, your yard waste is large. They recycle everything.
But, but there is a lot. So, well, I'll tell you how it looks in, in Dallas. The numbers aren't exactly the same, but basically people can down, we could go up to add the cost of weekly yard debris. And if you downsize your cart, you might pay $5 less a month than you pay now. So the thing I like about that is that it kind of puts some of the ownership on the folks who want to pay less. They need to do a little more sorting and a little more work. But one thing we do say about food waste collection, you know, it's a big deal. The state is looking at it in terms of really wanting to push that forward. And some places are looking at it mandatory. But one thing I will say is we only do it where we have weekly yard debris because we want people to be good neighbors. And sometimes it's not a very good neighbor with a, in the summer with yard debris that has food in it for two weeks.
Would it be possible to give a 65 gallon? You guys have 65 gallon carts yet. Would it be possible to get a rate for a 65?
You have a rate for 65.
Do we? Okay.
35, 65.
So maybe that, that, that information could get sent out to us prior to our work session and electronically unless, that we can.
Says not available for 64 gallon.
You know what? That was a mistake that I thought got changed before I gave it to you. You do have a 65 and there are some folks with it. So I will definitely change that, John.
Stories.
Yeah. I have a checklist for you.
So Dallas is a little different than that. They had every other week, so one week it was yard debris, one week it was recycled. So they didn't have every week recycled. So when, so where we are proposing, and we're really close to going to weekly on both, but at the time, we didn't have 65 as an option. So we, so we've instilled that as well. So we, we're open to changes. I mean, we have a 35, John knows this, he's been in the business forever. But we have a 35 that they can put an insert in that basically turns into a 20 gallon. So we can, you know, we can offer a variety of services, especially if people are going to recycle that much and they don't have maybe one bag to put in and 20 gallon container, basically hold one 15 gallon bag.
Right.
So there's all kinds of options.
Lots of options. And the other thing I keep throwing out there is about a year from now in 2025, we will see more plastics going into the recycling. And those are a lot. They're the big things that go into the garbage as well. You know, if you think about that giant plastic thing that Kate comes in at the bakery or some of those things that aren't recyclable now, those plastics will likely go into the recycling in years. So we'll see a shift.
We'll live in the styrofoam, right? I mean, in the Recyclable Modernization Act.
Yeah. It won't go in the cart.
No, but, but we'll have depots where we take it.
Styrofoam?
Yes. People who are buying TVs and things like that that have a big piece of styrofoam, they won't need to go in there. Of course, you can't stop them. But we'll have depots that will take it as part of the act.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think, I think we got some direction here and, and some information you can give us and then. Oh, yeah. That's good. All right.
And I was.
So go ahead, Mike.
I was just saying, I just also wanted to just pass along. So I thought it was real helpful. I, I know it was mentioned earlier about the phone calls coming out because I would have never thought pickup was on Christmas Day or New Year's Day. So I mean, for those of us that updated our phone numbers with you, I guess so. The, the phone calls and the, and the text messages, I thought were really helpful because I wouldn't even have thought to put it out.
I did, like glasses every other week for us here as well. So that's, I have that in my phone though. I do have that. But just for clarity, since it was brought up in the meeting, containers are, if they're damaged, they're free to get an exchange.
If you put fireworks in them and melt them down.
Oh, yeah. Well, I imagine that's probably not. Yeah. Just wear and tear.
Yeah, just wear and tear. Wheel breaks, they have a break.
So I thought, I had mine, mine, that wheel fell off or it snapped off and you guys got another one and, and I didn't, I didn't see a fee.
Our drivers carry some parts and pieces and they try to repair as they can when you see them. But yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We really encourage our drivers, like when they see it, you know, I mean, look on Highway 20 between Corvallis. They'll have traffic. They get blown over the ditch with this break. We say, you know, if you see that, call it in. I mean, we have container delivery drivers that work five days a week as well. So they can easily swap those things out. So sometimes, not perfect, you know, we, we have met our drivers, probably get a little bit lazy and go, ah, it's fine. They haven't called it in. But, but we try to get them to be proactive and to call those in, you know, and swap out.
Well, if any of those containers are out tonight, it's going to be a yard sale.
It's going to be a good day for us.
Not a good day. And I saw some still sitting out actually, so I don't know.
I talked to a driver all weekend today and said he got out these 50 times today. He ran the recycle route because the cart just tipped over.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a lot, you know, when you've got a route of 40,000 stops to get out 50 times, that's plenty of time.
Well, hit and out. Yeah, for sure. Okay. Well, I think we got some direction. We got our meeting on the 23rd, 4:00 PM. And if we can get us additional information on, on the different things that we could customize to and, and do that. And then from there, we'll work on, I'm moving forward with the contract, get some language and, and help from staff on that and a council member. And we'll go from there. Sounds good? I appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Thank you. We do have on the board a, to adopt a resolution for a 1%, it's 2024-01. It's been on our agenda for a little while to make things right. So.
Can I correct that? Wouldn't it be effective until February 1st?
Oh, okay.
I move the council adopt resolution 2024-01. Second.
Okay, with the amendment to February 1st? Good. Okay. Got a motion with the second. Take a vote on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose, same sign. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Okay. Moving on to new business. Budget committee. You want me to go ahead and say? Okay, for, so just for clarification, our resolution is effective tonight, today. And then any change with the, the price increase would be February 1st. So just make that clarification. Thank you. Um, the only thing I see on new business is last, but not least, is our appointment for budget. Thank you for a budget committee appointment. Kevin, Hexton is the only one that has put forth in senior at a number of our council meetings. So entertaining a motion to join the party for our, our budget meetings. It's the shortest part. It's only two a year. So, yeah, so, but it's fun.
Is he gonna chair it?
What's that?
Is he gonna chair it?
Yeah, that is part of, don't, don't tell him. The new guy gets to chair it.
You gotta get him in first.
I move the council point, Mr. Hexton, to the budget committee.
Second.
We've got a second. Take a vote on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose, same sign. Motion passes. Anything else? New budget or new, new business? If not.
Hold this closing, let's not pay position.
That's right.
There's good budgets in there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. Other than that, closing council staff comments? All right. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
I see it about the trees.
Thanks for being on the committee. Thank you.
So, so the key was, I'm asking you, but asking.